So I'd like to welcome you to the City of Cotati City Council Meeting. Mayor Mark Landman is not well and cannot be here this evening. And also Councilmember Wendy Skilman, as I look down at her empty seat, is also not here. She's traveling right now. So as the Vice Mayor, I will be standing in for Mayor Mark Landman this evening. And our first agenda item is the call to order, which we've done. And could we have a roll call?
I'll show Councilmember Skilman is absent. Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Delawso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
And I'll show Mayor Landman is absent.
Great. Thank you very much. And I would like to move into the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. I'd also like to introduce, Mayor Landman has been doing this, and I kind of like this idea, introduce the staff that's here this evening. And as I quickly scan the room, I think I've got everybody down. Checkmark. And we have besides our City Council members, Councilmember John Moore, Councilmember Susan Harvey, myself, John Delawso. We have our City Manager, Damian Obed. And this is a test, so staff people, if I don't call your name, be angry with me. A City Attorney, Robin Donahue. Police Chief, Michael Parish. Half of our Police Department in the back corner, thank you guys for being here. Community Development Director, Vicky Parker. Our Director of Administrative Services, Norm Veloso. We have our Director of Public Works and City Engineer, Craig Scott. And our Deputy City Clerk, Lauren Burgess, because if she wasn't here, none of this would be working or happening right now. Thank you, Lauren. All right. We are now moving on to item number four, which is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolution and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a unanimous vote. There'll be a 3-0 vote and two absences. All right, we'll move on to item five. Were there any public comments on the minutes before I'm remiss in missing that? No? Okay, thank you. Item five, which is announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The City of Cotati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Cotati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Cotati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Cotati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including exhibits, book clubs, and children's, art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, you can call the library at (584) 9121, or visit them on the web at The Cotati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, you can call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Cotati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, and that's N-I-X-L-E dot com. The City offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at cotatacy.org. And the next Coffee with a Cop is at Johnny's Java, located at 8492 Gravenstein Highway, Suite E, on Wednesday, April 18th, from 7:00 to 9:00 AM. Now, that's a lot of coffee to be consumed over a two-hour period, so please pace yourself. Please join our police officers for a cup of coffee and a casual conversation. We are now at item six on the agenda, which is the spot where we typically have our honorary mayor come from one of the local schools. And our honorary mayor is Kyla Mast of Lawrence Jones Middle School, but she's not able to attend this evening. And now, I know there's been a lot of me talking, I promise this meeting will get better. Just one of those things. Now, we have a couple of proclamations. And the first one is that we're recognizing April 8th through the 14th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And I believe we have folks from our dispatch who would be welcome to come up to the podium as I read this proclamation, so step right up. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Wow, all of a sudden I looked up and you guys were there. No kidding. All right. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Cotati Police Department Communications Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators of the Cotati Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of City of Cotati declares the week of April 8th through 14th, 2018, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Cotati in honor of the women and men whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. And the first thing we're going to do is give you guys a round of applause. So now would be an appropriate time if you'd like to, you don't have to, but if you'd like to step up to the microphone and say a few words.
Who's the ring leader?
We talk a lot on the radio already.
True.
I'll just say that we very much appreciate you honoring us, and we don't expect it. It's just part of our job, and that's what we do every day. But we, I know, probably speak for all of us, that we all are very committed to the city, and we all value our job and like our job a lot. So I personally am very passionate about what I do, and I come to work every day with the intense desire to make sure that everybody stays safe, so. Thank you.
Anyone else feel free, if not, you don't have to. It's not a prerequisite.
I just wanted to say thank you for the recognition. We all really appreciate it.
Well, and thank you guys for what you do, because it's, the most critical link is getting that communication between the public and to either the officers or firefighters, so they know what's happening and where. But the calmness that you can have in your job in talking to that other person over the phone, and having them stay on the phone until emergency services are there is really, really, really critical. I'm going to open it up to councilmembers if you'd like anything to say. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, thank you for all of the hard work you do. I think Kirsten said it well. I think you all put a lot of passion into it, and show a lot of care in taking care of our citizens, and helping to keep our community safe and keep our officers safe. And we really appreciate that. I have witnessed firsthand, you know, how you guys have responded to people, and it takes a lot to do that job, and you are oftentimes people's lifeline. And so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
I would just say, we really appreciate the work that you guys do. You're the face of a lot of issues in the community. And as a council, we appreciate your dedication and your hard work, and the community does as well. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I heard that voice. Yes, Chief, feel free. May I, may I make a brief comments?
I will allow that, yes.
All right, thank you. So these are all five of our dispatchers, and before you get too nervous, Officer Gaios in the seat right now, so.
Good, that's good.
911s are covered. I wanted to introduce them to you. I know you know most of them. So we got Rebecca Lucas, Renee Harris, Kim Peterson, Kirsten Knott, and Christina Montoya. Those are our dispatchers. I've talked about this before, but Cotati, the City of Cotati is a PSAP, which is a Public Safety Answering Point. So that's not just law enforcement calls, right? That's everything. It's law enforcement, it's fire, it's ambulance, it's everything. They take all the 911 calls, including all the cell calls. So it's a lot of 911s to, to handle. And we hear the term first responders all the time. During the fires, first responders, which people think police officers, firefighters, ambulance, you know, but I think these are our true first responders, because somebody's got to get the police officers and the firefighters there, and that's these people, and they got to get the information right to make that happen. You know, during the fires, that wasn't just a busy day or two, that was a busy week, you know, or more. And our dispatchers, even though we didn't have a fire in our city, our dispatchers were able to calm our callers down. You know, they sent out NIXLE alerts telling people we're not under evacuation, and it just gave our residents a sense of calm. I got a lot of comments from our citizens regarding that. I'm also happy to say that our city participates in a, in a shared computer-aided dispatch system. And so the sheriff's office was really overwhelmed, and their dispatchers were getting burnt out. So the sheriff's office reached out to our city for some help, and because we have that shared services, we had dispatchers able to go up and relieve sheriff's dispatchers. So I was, I was happy to see that, and I thanked them for that. Another thing, as you know, we're going to be Sonoma State University's PSAP, right? Which is a big deal. And I don't have the institutional knowledge that they have to make that transition happen, so they've been behind the scenes, and they've been very helpful to me. They just have institutional knowledge on the computer-aided dispatch, records management system, the mobile in-car computers, mapping, like mapping out the campus, and this whole California law enforcement transmission system, you know, so we can run Sonoma State University Police Officers' information regarding license plates and people. So they're providing the roadmap for us to take over their 911 calls and radio calls. And so I just wanted to recognize them for that, so thank you for that. And Vice Mayor, that's all I got.
Great, thank you, Chief. That was great, I appreciate it. Now's the time where the three of us are going to come down, and somebody's going to get their iPhone out and snap a photo of all of us standing right here.
Okay, I want to make sure I get a good one, so it may take more than one, okay? All right. Guys, ready? Here we go. One, two, three. Oh, you were blinking. No, just kidding. Here we go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you, guys. One more. All right. One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, we're going on to our other proclamation this evening, which is from the City for recognizing April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I believe we have some representatives who, again, same process, will have you come right up to the podium while I read this. It's, this one's even longer than the first one, so bear with me. It's a great one. So proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cotati recognizing April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has a profound and lasting impact on every community member of Sonoma County. And whereas national research indicates that one in five women will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and nearly half of all women will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas, one in 17 men will be raped at some point in their lifetime, and one in five men will experience some form of sexual violence. And whereas, every 98 seconds, a person is sexually abused, violated, exploited, or raped in America. And whereas, young people are at greatest risk of sexual violence, and youth aged 12 to 17 are two and a half times more likely to be raped or sexually assaulted than their adult counterparts. And whereas, disabled people, people of color, LGBTQ people, homeless people, transgender people, undocumented people, and people of other marginalized identities are even more likely to be victimized by sexual violence. And whereas, over 18,000 members of the military and over 80,000 people who are incarcerated experience sexual violence every year. And whereas, we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas, with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence in the City of Cotati through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas, the City of Cotati strongly supports the effort of Verity and encourages every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to end sexual violence, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors of all backgrounds connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this 10th day of April 2018 by the City Council of the City of Cotati, that the City of Cotati reaffirms its commitment to address the issue of rape and sexual violence by remembering victims, believing and supporting survivors, holding perpetrators accountable for their actions, and challenging societal myths and behaviors that perpetuate sexual violence in our community. Be it further resolved, that along with the United States Government and the State of California, the City of Cotati designates the month of April 2018 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So if you would like to introduce either yourselves individually or as a group, and if you have a couple of words you might want to say, then we'll have a few words, and we'll do the proclamation photo again.
Well, my name's Katie. I am the homeless outreach worker with Verity, so I target, well, I don't target, I like work with the homeless people primarily, the homeless survivors. We have David, who's a volunteer in prevention, and then Kat is our Veterans Counselor, so we kind of have a lot of bases covered right now. I guess we just want to say thank you for honoring us, and the county's support really means a lot.
Great. Did anybody else want to, feel free?
Wanted to thank the City and the community's support in our work. We really do appreciate it, and we appreciate the reaffirmation of what we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore, any comments?
Dare I ask? I don't know that these numbers have gone down from last year at all. Maybe there's even more of an awareness these days with some of the other Me Too movements and things like that that are out there. I think you guys do a tremendous job out there. I hope and work toward education, which is what will hopefully foster a much more positive culture and awareness, and admire your work and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, thank you for all you do. I think we just honored the dispatchers as first responders, and I think in some sense a lot of the work that you guys do is also us first responders to people that have had terrible things done to them. So appreciate that. That's not always an easy job to do, and it takes a very special individual to do that. And it sounds like you're all focusing in different areas, all very well-needed, and we really appreciate all of the work you do.
It was, you know, I read this proclamation before the meeting started, and, but I think I was just in one of those modes of, let me make sure I'm reading everything, and everything's, makes sense. But rereading it just really kind of ripped my gut out. It's just, you know, it's horrific, the things that can and do go on out there. So this is an awkward statement, but we're going to come down to do a photograph, we're all going to try to smile for this photograph. And in that sense, we're honoring the work that you guys do and that you'll continue to do. Okay, we will now move on to an item on the agenda where I will not talk. This is really probably a reason to applaud again, but hold it for now. We're going to go, yeah, see, council, I knew you'd do that. We're going to have a presentation on the carbon fee and dividend concept. This will be about a 10 or 10-minute presentation. Does the City Manager have any introductions you need to do, or? Nope? Nope? Okay. Then Linda will have you do your own introduction. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. My name's Linda Paget. I live here in Cotati, and I have a practice as a marriage and family therapist, and also training in neurobiology. And I'm happy to be here. Oops. I'm happy to be here as a representative of the nonprofit, nonpartisan organization called Citizens Climate Lobby. And I want to start out by appreciating you for your previous actions on behalf of the climate, which are many, including joining the climate mayors, your resolution in support of the Paris Climate Agreement, your regional collaboration on Climate Action 2020, and I especially appreciate the public EV chargers that you provided for us. And we think you'll find our request this evening to be very much in alignment with your previous actions. So in the past just few years, we've had a chance to see extreme weather events in our, in Sonoma County. These are some photographs by photographer Karen Coys, who's here in our audience, that illustrate these, three of these. And it's difficult to say that any one climate event, any one weather event, is caused by climate change, but we can definitely say that the climate is changing. This is a graph of billion-dollar weather events, and you can see from 1980, I can use this, 1980, to the present. You can see on the right here is the cost of these weather events each year. And in 2017, the cost was approximately $380 billion, which is more than half of our national defense budget. So we know that the problem is too many greenhouse gases in the atmosphere, and the appropriate response is to stop putting them in the atmosphere. And economists tell us that there's a pretty straightforward, effective, and efficient way of getting less of what we want less of, and that's to make it more expensive. So we need to make carbon pollution more expensive or accountable for its true costs, some of which are in the slide before. And so right now, climate change costs aren't included in energy prices. So carbon-intensive energy looks much cheaper than it actually is, and cheaper than clean alternatives. But it's actually much more expensive, and this amounts to basically a carbon discount. And this discount creates an environment in which it's very hard for us to get off of our dependence on fossil fuels. So Citizens Climate Lobby's approach to addressing this disconnect is called a National Carbon Fee and Dividend. And both economists and climate scientists alike argue that it's a necessary next step, and we believe it's a very transparent and fair approach. It has three parts, like a three-legged stool. The first is to place a fee on fossil fuels at the source, at the well, at the mine, at the port of entry. And this fee starts low, and it increases steadily every year. Oops, I did something. Pressed the wrong button. I get to stop this stopwatch in that time. Okay. The second piece is to return all of that revenue to households equitably. And the third leg of the stool is a border adjustment to charge a tariff on products, carbon-intensive products that come from countries that do not have such a carbon fee, and to give a rebate on American businesses that are sending products for export to these countries. So this has the effect of fossil fuels and fossil fuel-intensive products become more and more expensive, and clean energy becomes less and less expensive by, in comparison. So this gap encourages investment in renewables, and rewards producers and consumers and nations if they admit fewer greenhouse gases. And it also harnesses the power of literally billions of marketplace decisions to accelerate this transition to green energy. And so this promises to wean us off our dependence on fossil fuels in a very orderly and predictable So in 2014, a organization called, okay. Regional Economic Models, Inc., released a study of what this carbon fee and dividend would do nationally and regionally. And RME, as I'll call it, is a very highly respected group that has government, industry, university, and nonprofit clients, and they span the political spectrum. So first and foremost, after 20 years, it will reduce emissions. So actually, it's supposed to say it reduces emissions below 52% of 1990 levels, 52% below 1990 levels. And the dividend acts as an economic stimulus that actually creates 2.8 million new jobs, mostly in the service sector, and grows GDP by an average of 70 to 85 billion dollars a year. And since there are many other toxins emitted when fossil fuels are burned, actually almost a quarter million lives would be, or premature deaths would be averted by this. And because the fee is ever rising- And because the fee is ever-rising, then the dividend is ever-rising, and after 20 years, the income increase for a family of four would be about $4,800. And significantly, over two-thirds of households would either break even or come out ahead, given the increased costs of products under this scheme. And this would help protect the poor and the middle class from the higher prices. So one of the missions of Citizens Climate Lobby is to create the political will for a livable world. And one of the main ways we do that, you can tell from our name, is we meet with members of Congress and their staff. And we have one rule, and that's to treat everyone with respect, appreciation, and gratitude, even those who oppose us. And so after over 10 years of this, these efforts have resulted in the formation of a robust bipartisan House Climate Solutions Caucus. It's grown from about 16 members at the beginning of 2017 to 72 members today. And these members must join in pairs. They must, like Noah's Ark, they must reach across the aisle and find someone from the other party to join with. And so it's evenly split, 36 Republicans, 36 Democrats. Their mission includes supporting bipartisan policy options that address the challenges of a changing climate. They've had success voting as a block, and they've recently introduced a bill. And not all of them are pictured, but you can see our representative, Thompson, is there. He joined last year, and we still need him to be even more of a climate leader and a champion for this issue. So another way we build political will is by asking for resolutions and endorsements from community leaders. So we have more than 90 resolutions from at the state, county, municipal level, including California State, Sonoma Marin, San Mateo Counties, and locally Santa Rosa, Petaluma, and Sebastopol Cities. And these serve to support our representatives in championing this issue. So our request is that the City Council of Kotati join this course of cities in strongly urging the United States Congress to enact carbon fee and dividend without delay. And I leave you, ah, I've got five seconds. I leave you with this sentiment.
That's great. Well, thank you. That's a very nice quote, too. So Linda, just so you know, what we'll do is see if there's any questions from the council, and then we'll open it up for a public comment, and listen to that public comment, and then it'll come back to us for direction to staff. So thank you for that presentation. I appreciate it. Is anybody, any comments at this point, either for Linda or for staff?
No. Are we considering actually enacting a resolution this evening?
Not this evening. That's not on the agenda. Yeah.
No, just a couple more questions. Linda, if you have a moment.
Sure.
The information regarding some of the numbers and the studies, that can be accessed where?
At the information that I presented tonight.
Right.
Yeah, I can give you the links. It's mostly on our website. We have a very comprehensive website, Citizens Climate Lobby. So if there's any particular thing you want to see, I could easily get you the link.
I'll go ahead and take a look at that website, and then that'll have links to the various data sources.
Yes.
Terrific.
The references, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, great.
Great. All right, thank you. Councilmember Harvey, any questions? No? All right, I have none at this time. So thank you, Linda. I appreciate that. Now's the time. I will open this up to any public comments. So if anybody would like to comment on this presentation, now's the time. Mr. Kirkman, come on up. Sorry, that's okay. It's okay. Come on.
Hi, I'm Karen Price, and I'm a resident of Kotati. We all know that the U.S. puts a huge amount of carbon dioxide into our atmosphere every day, and we also know that this is extremely dangerous. Scientists agree that the Earth's climate is changing. Bill McKibben has stated that the amount of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere should not go above 350 parts per million. For the first time in human history, this number has already risen above 400 parts per million, and we need things to change quickly if the Earth is to remain a habitable planet for future generations. If we want strong climate legislation, Congress needs to hear from us, and that is the reason we are asking the city of Kotati to endorse this resolution. We are asking that you adopt our proposal urging Congress to pass a carbon fee and dividend. This legislation would strongly discourage the future use of fossil fuels and put us on a track for more renewable energy. We've got some supporters here, and maybe they could stand so that we could acknowledge that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Kirkman.
I do apologize, but a three-minute presentation unfortunately is not quite enough for most of us to understand what's going on. Some of us have been watching this for some time. I have some concerns because they showed a few slides of floods and that sort of thing. Unfortunately, I live near an area that had a good storm drain and was filled in with cement and cobblestone via the city of Kotati and the county. It has since been realized that that's probably not the best storm drain solution, to fill it up with cement and crap and cobblestones. And now it's not cleaned as nearly as well as it was years ago. Some of the old methods, believe it or not, are better methods. I'm impressed with the amount of police that were here for the proclamation. Unfortunately, I have witnessed police vehicles running for over an hour while people are eating their lunch downtown. I'm happy that they are going downtown and spending their money in town, but I'm a little concerned with police vehicles running for over an hour. Now, I do have to acknowledge, for the most part, I don't see police cars at all. So I think there's a big carbon footprint being released over the last seven years because the vehicles don't travel at all in our town. But we have to kind of look at it in the big screen of things. Does this mean that we don't have police protection because we want to save the Earth? Or does this mean that we maybe hold people accountable, and that we have business that takes care of itself? Certain things sound really good, but they don't always work out to be really good. Years ago, people wanted to have cobblestone in their storm drains. Now, we call them ecosystems and creeks. The reality is, is cement blocking water flow, and people have died in floods, 1981, for example. So we need to think on the big picture and not always do what feels good. The first half hour of every one of your meetings is proclamations and feel-good stuff. The press has come and gone. They took their photographs, so they have their news. The reality is, you have to start governing the city and start being real. I'm 100% behind taking care of the environment. At the same time, we have to do something a little bit better than saying, oh, isn't this great? We signed off on this. We have to start doing things that takes care of Kotati. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on public comment? Mr. Berich.
Good evening, council. Good evening to our guests in the room, our folks watching from home tonight. My name is George Berich. I'm a former city councilman here in Kotati. And I'd like to say a lot of the claims made in this presentation, I think, is baloney. There are no facts here to back it up. We all know that the Earth has gone through many cycles throughout its history where carbon dioxide levels were much higher than they are today, and the planet wasn't destroyed. Carbon dioxide is an important and critical element to life. We all wouldn't be here if it wasn't for carbon dioxide. And there's no correlation that carbon dioxide is, contributes to climate change, or global warming, or anything else. This is an issue about control. It's about control. It has always been about control. We've all read many pieces of literature and publications about this issue, and what it really comes down to is control. It also comes down to redistribution of wealth from this country to another country, giving advantages to other countries. Nobody talked about China tonight, and their release of carbon dioxide and harmful gases and so forth. Nobody's talking about other parts of the industrial world who are never going to sign on to anything like this. This is all a political ploy. It makes people feel good. It's not realistic. And I think it's disingenuous, disingenuous at best. And I always object to the city council getting hoodwinked into these things, where they're not going to make any kind of contribution or any type of positive change regarding this. Science is not behind this study tonight. Scientists are heavily in disagreement about some of the findings that we see here tonight. And I would caution you to not embarrass yourself to try to join on to any junk science that we hear tonight. We need to stick to city business. And I've seen this before, where the council wants to try to act like they're on this world stage that somehow Kotati is going to be listened to, and they're going to sign on to this and that, you know? And you can't take care of basic needs and basic responsibilities in this town. And I agree with Mr. Kirchman on this. You know, you can't even take care of the high weeds in town. You can't even enforce your own weed abatement laws. How are you going to have any kind of effect on climate change, and you can't even address the city's infrastructure and enforcing our laws and ordinances? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Richard Sanghas. I'm a resident of Kotati. I also teach at the university in, over in Roanoke Park. I'm an anthropologist, a professional anthropologist. And one of the things that I actually teach about are long-term adaptations and maladaptations in human behavior. There is considerable, solid evidence. Clearly, it cannot all be presented in 10 minutes. What we saw from Linda Paget were pointers to where we could go find further information, evaluate it, use good critical thinking, and think in terms of proportion and scale. And so I was pleased when Councilmember Moore was asking, how do I find out more? How do I do a deliberate, careful consideration, instead of simply knocking off a message of support on something that wasn't thought through? This particular effort is a very new way of approaching these difficult things that are tensions within our society. I think that it's been carefully thought out. The bipartisan approach has been really crucial for the political sphere. But what we're also seeing is that a lot of people who are doing policy and procedures and other kinds of work are saying, how can this be implemented in a way that doesn't have more negative unintended consequences than the positive ones that they're trying to do? And frequently, we do see the folks on the lower end of the economic scale taking the brunt from those of us who are better off, or who are making money on the backs of those people. So this is addressing many different issues, cultural, economic, and I think it's got about the best chance of any model I've seen in quite a while. As to the science behind it, science is always emerging. It's never, we never have the final answer. We are constantly moving towards better and better understandings. And I think it's actually a dangerous move to say, let's not follow the science. Let's reject it based on a position that feels more familiar or comfortable to us. Change will be difficult. Humans don't change unless they have to, or unless they see great opportunity. And I see both that we have to, or the maladaptations that we've been doing for quite a while, long before we were aware of this stuff, are going to lead us into a position where we have no other choice. But the sooner we do it, and the more sensibly we do it, the more likely we're actually going to be living the kinds of lives that we want, in an environment that we want, and working with each other. This is the kind of business that our political leaders should be doing. This is the kind of message we need to be sending up to the lines. Why would anybody in Washington or Sacramento want to do something if they don't feel it reflects the will of the people? Please be our voice as the will of the people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to comment? Yes, Loriann?
Hi, my name is Loriann Barber. I live in Kotati. I heard you on the radio yesterday, John. That's good. I also want to stand in support of Kotati adopting this resolution. I think it's a very elegant solution to a big problem that faces us in the world today. I think the fact that the carbon pricing, you know, works so that people use less carbon, it's something that, you know, we see in many places, that price goes up, use goes down. But also this piece about the dividend, I think it's really, it's just, it is really elegant, the way that it gives the money. The government doesn't keep the money. It's not really a tax. It's given back to people. And so it's, just makes so much sense, you know, as a way to address this problem. I think the Citizens Climate Lobby has done a great job of providing and presenting information and getting support across the aisle and everywhere for this proposition. And I'm in support of it, and I would encourage you to be in support of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to comment on this? All right, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back to council. Any comments or questions? I'll start with Councilmember Harvey. Any comments or questions you might have?
No, I appreciate the presentation, and I do want to go look at more of the information. And I think that Mr. Sanghas said it quite eloquently, that we do need to hear from our citizens, and we do need to be their voice, and we do need to, as you put it, move things up the chain where it's necessary and helpful to our communities. And I think that that's all that's being asked here, is for us to do that, to represent our citizens. But I appreciate the presentation and look forward to digging in a little bit deeper. But thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
No, I don't have any further questions at this time. Thank you.
Nothing new? Okay. Yeah, I actually had checked out the website a couple of days ago, and there is a lot more information and links to scientific studies and a variety of things. I was kind of, I'm going to say shocked, when I was reading the concept of this, where, you know, there's this discussion of money being sent back to, you know, the citizens, those of us that are generating the GHGs and so on. You know, we've known for many, many years, you know, there are people that don't believe in climate change, and that's, you know, their opinion. It's perfectly fine. But there is so much evidence out there of the climate changing, species on the move, most of them moving up in elevation. I mean, I've read too many of them over the years, and I guess, you know, my basic question is, is there really any harm in trying to preserve the planet that we live on? And I'm going to tell you that the answer is really no. There is no harm in trying to protect this planet, because if we don't, there could be, could be, some consequences down the road for all of us. So I think, you know, there's no harm in doing it. We all take care of the property we live on, the house we live in, the building that we work in. You know, we take care of these things. So we should take care of the bigger house, and that's our planet. So with that, we're not taking, well, we may be taking an action. Let me see here. I think one thing we can discuss is looking at this as a future I think one thing we can discuss is looking at this as a future agenda item, since it's not agendized to take any action on this evening.
Sure, yeah, when we get to that point.
Right, we're not quite there in the agenda. So at this point, we're going to say thank you for your presentation. If you want to hang out for a little while, you may hear a little something more on it. All right, thank you all very much for that. Okay, I lost my agenda. Beautiful, here we go. We're moving on, well, we're moving on to item nine, approval of the final agenda for this evening. Are there any changes?
Thank you, Mayor. I would recommend one change. Moving regular agenda item 13A up to immediately following this item. So before citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items.
Okay, do we have support for that?
I'll reply with that.
Okay, unanimous support 302. Great, we will do that. All right, let's move on then after item nine. We are now going to move to item 13A, which is appointment of the library commissioner.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. So just to be kind of brief on the staff report, the library commission seat is a four-year seat. And the seat was originally, back in 2017, was Nelson Kellogg was appointed to that seat by this council. And the seat had been vacated. He had to vacate the seat for personal reasons. And the city advertised and received an application for the seat by Jason Merrick, which is included in this council packet. And I believe he's here today? Yeah. So he's available for questions if you have any. And it is recommended that the mayor, or in this case, the vice mayor, nominate Mr. Merrick to serve the remainder of the term on the library commission, which would end on July 26, 2020. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for the city manager?
No, no, thank you.
Councilmember Harvey, no? None? All right, then maybe if we could ask, I'll open up the public comment, but I'd like to ask Mr. Merrick if you'd like to just come up and tell us a little bit about yourself. We have a little bit in the packet, but it's always better to hear from you than from what we read.
Good evening, city council, city staff, and Qatadi residents and the public. My name's Jason Merrick. I'm a recent member of the city, or resident of the city of Qatadi, starting in 2017. I've always been involved in my civic community. So coming to the city of Qatadi, I was looking at an avenue to participate in the local community. This opportunity came available to me. Since a child, I've used the Roanoke Park-Qatadi municipal library system in all its avenues. I still remember the cardex system where you had to go to get a card to pick out a book and use the library resource reference person there at the library. So I've seen all the escalations of the library now where you see regularly people using the internet service. You see people using the meeting rooms. I use the video services, the rental there, the removal or the temporary renting of the books. So I am not only a user of the library system, but a big believer in the system as well as providing essential services for municipal governments and localities. So when this opportunity arose, I thought I'd take that chance to participate in providing that service and take it as an honor and would love to represent the city of Qatadi on the library commission.
That's great, thank you. Before you step down, just a second. Let's just check to see if there's any questions before you leave. I'll start with Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. I appreciate your desire to serve on the library commission. And I love the fact that you are not only an advocate, but a person that's used and learned and gained from the library system. I think that'd be a perfect fit in that position to continue to bolster the Sonoma County, the Roanoke Park-Qatadi library. So thank you so much for stepping up.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yeah, I liked what you said, that you just recently, well, recently, joined our community and already that you've decided to see what you can do to help in the community. And that's very telling because you haven't been here very long, but you already want to jump in and help. So it sounds like you are well-versed in the services that they provide and look forward to you doing this for us when we really appreciate the work that the library commission does.
Yeah, it's a great group of folks. I worked with them for many years. I was a commissioner, the countywide level too. So I got to really learn about all of the libraries in the system and, you know, the pluses and minuses that we have. And so, you know, we've brought some of them up to a higher standard and we still have others to bring up. So we will shortly be taking an action on this item, but I'm going to keep the public comment open and see if there's others that'd like to comment. So thank you very much, appreciate it. Are there any other members of the public that'd like to comment on this? Mr. Beric.
Thank you, sir. The application, the appointee or the future appointee here seems very impressive. So I congratulate him for coming up and volunteering and stepping up and so forth. And I appreciate Mr. Deloso explaining that you had been on the library commission for many years. And maybe you can expand a little bit to the public a little bit more about what that was like and what that entails so that we have future people coming forward to apply for this position as well. You and I may have talked about this in the past. I applaud your efforts on the library commission. However, on the other side, I missed you down here at City Hall during those years. I know you were hardworking with the commission. I know you had family responsibility, work responsibilities and so forth. But I missed having some prior city council members being here during the council meetings to help the council understand where the city has been and help them with their lack of experience at times. And when you and I discussed your duties with the library commission, you would explain to me that you did have an understanding of what was going on in town because of your friends would tell you what was going on. And I was really worried about that because you get one-sided story of what's going on and you come to a position of power and you have a skewed look at things as far as I'm concerned. The Roanoke Park-Qatadi library also has an interesting history that I can remember when Lynn Conde would come to the meeting when that new library was being constructed and explaining some of the challenges and so forth. And I'll never forget when she came--